Well then, well you sent me this.
Well, it's on the show.
And we are live now, so if you want to mayor discuss.
Okay Jeff, let's go ahead and start the meeting. Um, call to order.
Okay, I mean, I mean. We'll just start with that. Chris Head.
Chris Head, present.
Mary Jean Creaker. Mitch Magnus.
Mitch Magnus, present.
Linda DeWolfe. Linda DeWolfe. Yeah, she was there just a second ago. She has her, Linda, you have your mic needed. Linda DeWolfe.
Sorry, I lost the page. Linda DeWolfe, present.
Alright.
Thank you for your patience.
Bill Boswell.
Bill Boswell, present.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Heath Kirkpatrick, present.
Joel Williams. Wayne Kellum.
Wayne Kellum, present.
Okay, just to recap, uh, Mary Jean Creaker. Are you on? Or Joel Williams? Mary Jean or Joel? Okay, mayor, you do have a quorum. I show six councilman present, two absent.
Okay, thank you. Uh, let's go ahead with the prayer. Pastor, would you pray please?
Yes, alright, let's pray. God, we, uh, we just thank you for technology. We thank you that we could meet as city leaders and God, we ask for your wisdom. Uh, Lord, for our nation, all of our government officials as we have this crisis, Lord, would you guide them? God, we especially are thankful for all of our healthcare workers and nurses and doctors that are alive that are serving, protecting. God, we lift them up to you. God, God, we pray that you would, we would all look to you. In these times of crisis that we grow closer to you and closer to each other, we ask you for wisdom for the business that we need to do tonight, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we're part. One nation, one under God, under God, with liberty, justice, and all. Okay, thank you. Um. Oh boy, let's see here. We need to approve the minutes. Uh, need a motion.
Mayor, Wayne Kellum, like a motion to approve minutes.
Second.
Chris Head, second. Chris Head, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a record. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Uh, since I don't have a one to recognize them, and we do that as a roll call?
Uh, roll call.
Chris Head.
Yes.
Mary Jean Creaker. Mitch Magnus. Mitch, I did. Did you vote?
Mitch Magnus, aye.
Linda DeWolfe.
I did.
Linda DeWolfe, yes.
Bill Boswell.
Bill Boswell, yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick.
Heath Kirkpatrick, yes.
Joel Williams. Wayne Kellum.
Wayne Kellum, yes.
Thank you. This is gonna take just a little bit of getting used to, and we wanna make sure we document all the votes correctly, so while we're online, we will do them all by roll call.
Okay guys, thank you. Uh, before we start with the department reports tonight, I wanna share with you all and, uh, put out a big thanks to Jeff Pratt. He has put hours and hours, uh, into this, uh, technology thing, so. He's got it going pretty darn good. So, let's go to police reports. Chief Grady.
Alright, can everyone hear me alright?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Um, as far as the police department goes, we actually shut the doors to the police department Friday, the thirteenth, in anticipation of this social distancing and, and, and closing down. Um, we're running a full shift. We had personnel that are not coming to work every day. Um, some of those are able to work from home, some are able to, uh, work by phone, uh, but we do have a full patrol shift that is there every day. Uh, we have a registered nurse that checks our temperature and asks a battery of questions at the beginning of every shift. She even comes down if we have to bring in a prisoner to check them, so we're trying our best to, um, stay away and keep our people safe from this, uh, virus. That being said, our number of calls is probably less than half than what we normally have, so, uh, it's working. Uh, people are staying home. Obviously, schools are shut down, so, uh, we see a direct reflection in that. Now, the fire department, I know they're a different story. They still have the same amount of medical calls and, as they probably did before, but. Um, other than that, um, it seems to be working real well. We still respond to emergencies, uh, as we always have. And, um, if there is a, uh, someone that comes to the office, we have an intercom system. They stand in the foyer, they're out of the weather, we can speak to them that way. If there's an officer that needs to speak with them, we'll dispatch an officer to the front of the, uh, police department and they can speak with them. But most of ours are taken over the phone. Um, we've not had a, a big influx as far as any type of crime. We've not seen anything rise. Um, it's just, it's just kinda been a, a different type feeling. This is, uh, kind of uncharted waters. Thirty something years in law enforcement and I've never experienced a shutdown like this, so, um, it's a little bit new for all of us. And, uh, if anyone has any questions, I'll, I'll try and answer them.
Okay, Chief Grady, thank you. Uh, let's go on to Wade.
Uh, can everybody hear me well?
Yes.
Alright, excellent. Um, Wade followed, uh, pretty quickly behind, uh, Chief Grady and the PD and changing our operations. I did send out an email to, uh, members of the public works committee, just kinda keeping them updated as to where we were, and I'll try to briefly go over how each one of my departments is handling this. Um, purchasing, our, our purchasing agent is currently working entirely from home right now, and David was very helpful in getting everything set up so that she could do that, and he did it quickly, so that was, uh, welcome. Um, water and sewer construction maintenance departments, we are trying to keep just under, uh, fifty percent of our staff on site, um, at this time in order to maintain our essential function. Sorry, I actually had a phone call come in while I was talking. Um, you know, keeping water running and the sewer collection and treatment going are our primary functions, especially in a case like this that we've gotta keep going. Uh, so we're keeping a lot of our guys away from each other, uh, wanting to, you know, not expose them, not create a situation where we're exposing, you know, our community, but also just to make sure I've got enough healthy people going forward to addressing the emergencies that come up in the water and sewer side. And so similar, at the wastewater plant, we reduced, uh, the onsite staff to a bare minimum on a Monday through Thursday. Uh, I have two operators, uh, keeping the plant going and, uh, have one person that works in the lab, uh, continuing with the, you know, required testing that has to be done. Uh, street department is currently working primarily on an on-call basis. Um, that's mainly just to keep them separated as much as we can. Uh, when we have things that need to be done, we call in a crew, they get it done, and we send them back home. Uh, buildings and grounds are pretty similar situation as the street department. Um, both of those departments, here before long, we're gonna have to be working a little bit more, um, as far as onsite, just because grass growing season is coming up and we're gonna have to do a lot of mowing. Fortunately, that's outside and it should be, should be okay to get them out there mowing when the time's necessary. Um, the gentleman that handles our cemeteries is working from home, answering calls. Uh, he will do appointments as necessary at the office, uh, same with, uh, the compost facility, uh, essentially working from home and then going straight to the compost facility instead of, uh, working out of the office. Uh, maintenance shop, we have, uh, we've got one tech that will be on, onsite and one tech that is offsite, uh, to try and keep them as separated as well, because I only have two of them, if they both get sick, we could be in a little bit of an issue keeping equipment going. Uh, as far as some of the other staff, um, we have a few that are working, uh, a few hours a day in the office getting stuff done and then transferring calls, uh, to their cell phones as they leave so that they can handle business from their house, so. I don't know if I have any other reports to, to give. Um, you know, with, with reducing our onsite staff and, and pulling back to just the essential maintenance and meeting our regulatory requirements, we pretty well paused, uh, most of the construction that we were doing in-house, and. So that won't put us behind schedule on quite a few, few things that we want to get done this year, but hopefully before long, we can get back to, we'll speak. Uh, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Wade, thank you. That was a good report. Uh, Chief Lowery.
Yeah, can anybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm kind of following along lines of the last two department heads. Uh, you know, we changed some of our stuff as far as, uh, station, we're keeping all the stations locked, we're doing screenings. Uh, for our shift guys, we're doing them twice a shift, one, when they come on and then again at eight o'clock at night. Um, we've also cut back on all of our, uh, clean premise, uh, inspections, most things we're holding off on all that, so this is all behind us. Um, as far as calls and response, we, uh, we can't change what we do. Of course, we gotta respond to the calls, so we've still been pretty busy. Um, you all may have seen in the news of the department fire that I had, so we're, we're still, we're still going. Um, y'all should have your packets, uh, from my department in the Google Drive. If anybody has any questions of any of the responses or anything we've had, um, that's really all I've got to talk about.
Okay, any questions for Mark? Okay guys, uh, thank you, Mark. Let's go on to Luke, finance.
Y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Um, I, I will, you know, continue to go over some of the policies that we have for our, our employees here, but we are covered here at the water billing office. Um, we, we at least have one person in taking payments, and we do ask people to call ahead if they are gonna turn on water. Uh, just to make it run a little smoothly since we're only operating through the drive-through. Um, everything else, I'm having the, uh, other ladies in the office kinda give me a, a weekly update of all their required reports that they have to send out, and we're making sure that they come in to get those done, and then if they do get those done, um, and they don't have anything else that's required, we do go ahead and send them home to just kinda separate. I'm in a pretty good position here because almost everybody's cross-trained on how to take payments and, and, uh, knowing at least one of the person's, uh, function, so, uh, we, we should be able to keep everybody away so that way we can at least keep everybody, uh, keep everything running if something were to come up and somebody was, was to get sick, so. Um, kinda going to, uh, onto the next slide there, Jeff. Um, just a little bit of touch on sales tax. Uh, we did get the numbers in for February. Uh, we were down a little bit compared to, um, budget and, uh, last year for February. Um, but overall year-to-date, you'll see we are up in the city, uh, forty-five thousand dollars in the general fund for just the city portion of the sales tax, and county, they actually went up, uh, over last month, so, um, they are up eighty thousand. Um, I caution you, cause I have no idea what's gonna happen over the next several months, but it, it is good to, uh, to have that cushion up front, and we will continue to monitor that. Um, you know, compared to budget, we're up eighteen thousand for the city and county forty-eight, so, um, those are good numbers for sure, but, uh, hopefully that, well, we may see a pretty expansive march just from all of, uh, the buying that's going on in the grocery stores, uh, but we will see a hit, I'm assuming, over the next few months, so we just need to be careful of that. Uh, Jeff, if you go to the next slide, please. Um, reserves. Um, James White actually said something about this to me the other day. Um, this is kinda why I say, uh, I wanna talk about reserves in the number of months, cause if something were to happen that shuts down sales tax, um, these are the number of months that we have to operate if we were to not receive any money. Now, we all know that's really probably unlikely to not receive any money. Um, so that number will continue, and it should go over that much, but if, if operations stopped and we didn't receive any money, the general fund could operate for six point seven-two months, and the water and sewer fund could do the same for four, almost four and a half months there. Um, so that's why I always talk about in terms of months. Yes, there's a dollar figure tied to that, but that's why whenever I tab that month there at the end of the spreadsheet or the, the lead sheet, that's why that's out there, so kinda for times like this. Um, another thing we wanted to touch on too, uh, we are, we did get hit with a large rebate this last month, and we are still trying to figure out how we can get that information to you. Is, uh, I think we may even give another call. Uh, we're gonna try to figure out as much as we can because we had another ninety-five thousand dollars in rebates, um, this last month. And if we wouldn't have had that, we would've had a banner month, again, probably one of the highest, um, Fabuaries on record, so, um, those things hit us, we don't know what's gonna happen with that, but what that means is over fifty million dollars has been spent over the past, uh, twelve months, excuse me, thirteen months, in the city of Harrison. So, that's fifty million dollars in different invoices that are over twenty-five hundred dollars. That's how they get that rebate, so. There's money being spent here, so if we didn't have that fifty million, obviously, we may not have quite as much sales tax over the last thirteen months, so it is, it is good to see that people are investing in themselves here in the city, and unfortunately, that's just a, a side effect of what we're gonna see is, we can't necessarily predict when those are gonna happen. Um, but it is good news when it does, it means people are spending money. So if anybody has any other questions, I'd be, be happy to answer them.
Yeah, Luke, this is Mitch Magnus.
Sure.
Do we, uh, do we need to have some sort of reserve provision for this in the future?
Um, well, I always like to have a, a certain number of months. Um, typically, your minimum i- is gonna be three to four. That's kinda what people see. I've always wanted to be above six. I think that was our goal whenever I first came.
I was actually, I was actually referring to the, the rebates.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, you know, whenever we have, uh, sales tax reporting come in, should we set aside a certain amount for these rebates?
Well, we've actually talked about, uh, coming up with that sales tax budget and then anticipating, and I, I can go back and get the number of rebates over the last five years probably. And kinda coming up with that average for the year, and then maybe back that off of the sales tax that we anticipate. The problem is, we've been, you know, figuring that into our sales tax numbers going forward, so we may have to go back and, and figure out how we're recalculating that sales tax as well, but yes, there is definitely something we can do, we'll just have to budget it across the months. We won't be able to budget it by month.
Okay, and also in some discussions, I heard reference to something called the six.
You, you notice my sticker?
Yeah, it's, that's what I'm referring to. What is that?
We'll, we'll talk about it later, Mitch.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think Jerry wants to talk about that a little bit later on in the meeting, but he came up with a great idea and, and we've been trying to adhere to it, so.
Okay. No further.
One other thing just mentioned, um, if you've not been out to our website, uh, we've been trying to put out a bunch of information, Wade's done a great job, and, and Christine as well, about getting information out there on the COVID-nineteen virus, so. If you haven't checked it out, uh, please do. I know they've done a lot of work, they've done a great job of it, and it looks, I don't know how you get any more information out there because it's, it's pretty comprehensive.
Okay, any other questions for Luke? Uh, let's go on to David Wilson, please.
Good evening, council and mayor. I'll make this very brief, but, uh, we have some remote workers working this week. Luckily, we have a lot of, uh, programs that are streamed in the cloud. Um, so even in the fire department to asset essentials and public works and Google, like what we're doing here tonight, that Jeff's done a wonderful job with doing these Google hangouts, but, uh, luckily, and with the financial software, secure VPN from home if they need to get in and work from home on a few of the users. We're not doing this for everybody, but, uh, but as of right now, but, uh, but just wanna let you give you an update. I've been in touch with other IT departments throughout the state of Arkansas. We had a meeting this afternoon with, uh, with Little Rock Fayetteville and other smaller and bigger cities across the state IT directors, so we're all staying in touch and figuring out what's going on and what we can better do to, to help the city, our cities and, uh, our employees, so. Does anyone have any questions they'd like to ask me?
I just wanna make a quick comment that, uh, all, all of this stuff that we've been using the last couple of weeks is, uh, from, uh, our IT department, and, uh, that he's been working overtime, so he's, he's done a great job. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff, and you've done great with it.
Okay guys, too many compliments. Let's go forward. Um, Chuck, how about Chuck?
Hey, goodnight, if everybody can hear me. I'm glad everybody's hearing healthy. Um, the first couple of things I wanna talk about is, we are also, uh, have all of our facilities closed at this point, except for the, the, some of the park, and we're gonna talk about that later. Um, as far as activities go, I'm waiting on the Arkansas Activities Association to make a, a decision by March thirtieth on, uh, school events, and then, of course, the schools are closed till April seventeenth. Uh, they're supposed to make a decision, uh, about that. Of course, that affects our after-school program, um, and it may even affect our summer rec program, so that's what I'm kinda waiting to see, what we do about the schools, cause if the schools are in session, then we will open our facilities to allow the after-school again. If it's safe enough to be in school, I figure we're safe enough to have our after-school program. Uh, as far as leagues, we're right now with the youth, uh, we're telling everybody to go ahead and sign up. If for some reason we are not able to have the league, which starts in the middle of May, we're gonna give everybody a refund. Uh, so that's where we're at on the leagues things right now. Um, I sent out a packet to everyone about what we're doing at parks with our staff and what we've been sending out to the public. I hope everyone received that. If not, I can go over that. If you have a question when I get done, we can talk about that. Um, but, you know, one thing I'd like to talk to you guys about is closing down the playground. I, I drove past there a couple of times today, and there were over ten people at the playground area, and that, and we had left that open. We closed the bathrooms and left the walking track open, but I was gonna talk tonight about closing down the playground and the dog park, uh, just making sure all our facilities are closed and we're participating in, you know, no more gathering than ten people in one area. Uh, we, I, I go, I'd want some feedback on that because that's what I would like to do.
Chuck?
Yes, sir.
I don't know that we have any choice. Do you? I mean.
Well, I, I'd rather be on the safe side. We just haven't done it, so I was gonna let you guys know in case somebody was totally against it tonight, that we'll probably close that down tomorrow. Because with the weather getting warmer, a lot of people are getting outside, uh, which, you know, we, we don't wanna not condone getting outside and living a healthy life, but we definitely don't wanna be part of the spread of the virus, so I would like to close that down.
Yeah, I like, that's a good idea, too, closing it down, uh, the playground.
Yeah, I'd like to. And, and the dog park, and then leave the walking track open.
That include, that include the playground there across from the Army Reserve Center and wherever else you may have playgrounds set up?
Yeah, we can close them all now. We, we probably need to put signs up that say they're closed. Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions for Chuck? Alright Chuck, thank you. Uh, Shonda, you with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you very much for having me tonight. I hope everyone's staying healthy and six feet away at least from each other. I just wanted to bring everyone up to date on what we're doing at the Housing Authority, and besides our normal operations, we have locked the door to the public. We've installed a video ring doorbell, and, and that can be answered from anywhere. We also are in the process of making everything virtual in regards to all of our forms for application and annual recertification. We conducted our first virtual briefing last week to give someone a voucher. And, um, that, the voucher is used so that they can show proof that they're, um, eligible for housing assistance, for those that don't know. And also, um, we are starting, we've done our first virtual brief, uh, inspections this week. So we are still out inspecting, we're doing them virtual, and because we're, I'm trying to keep my employees from, you know, going into units that could possibly have the virus. We are also, our, right now, our hours are our normal hours, but we will be cutting back on them in the office, and once we become virtual to start working from home possibly, and we'll keep you all apprised of that. And in addition to our normal business this week, you know, we are facing a lot of people with changes to their income the last few days, especially due to the unfortunate events in the community, um, because of layoffs. And so we're, we have a ton of changes to do for April first, and our assistance is gonna go up drastically because approximately twenty-eight percent of our current families have jobs, and many of those families work at area locations that have, um, begun with layoffs. Or closed down, um, and some have been terminated, but most have been laid off. Hope, hopefully that's fortunate and they'll have their jobs back soon. And lastly, what we've been doing, I don't know if you've all heard, that we have been working with Sharon Care, partnering with them, trying to keep people in their houses, in their apartments, to stay away from others, out in the public. And we've been delivering food, um, emergency food supplies to the elderly, the disabled, and families with children that are low income, and not just our, um, residents, our, our tenants, but everyone in the community, and so far to date, we've delivered over five hundred sets of emergency food supplies to households. We've also provided almost six hundred and seventy-five lunches this week, and that's not counting what Sharon Care gave out at their location and at Sharon Kitchen. So this is just what myself, some community volunteers, um, city employees have helped. Public Works has been a great help to us. And, and many people in town, and, you know, we couldn't have done it without them, so it's going really well. Tomorrow's our last day, and then we're gonna figure out a new plan, but we wanted to try to get some food out there early to try. try to get some food out there early to try to keep people in ahead of the game to maybe stop the spread. Does anyone have any questions? Oh, and also we had a city council person out there. Wade was out there, Wayne was out there with his wife, Yvonne. Thank you so much. And Christine from the mayor's office.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Shonda?
Just praise. I have prayed. Sound like you guys doing a great job, Shonda. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Everyone together has really helped.
You and Chuck, please stay with us. We may have some questions we need to throw your way. Okay, let's go to committee reports. I believe Joel is, Joel, you there? Okay, we didn't, don't have Joel with us tonight, so we'll go on to finance.
Joel, Joel is with us.
Okay. Hey, Joel. Good evening, Joel.
Hey.
Hi there. How are you?
Good.
Thanks for, thanks for joining us. Anything to report tonight, Joel?
Not tonight.
Okay. Stay with us. We're going to go on to Mitch Magnus now. Mitch?
Nothing to report for finance.
What? That's a first. Okay, Linda.
This is Linda and no one has nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Linda. Mary Jean with us, Jeff?
I have not seen Mary Jean.
Well, it's going to be difficult when we, how are we going to have a motion to adjourn tonight? Okay, let's go on to Chris Head, please. I believe you have something.
Yes, tonight we were going to talk about the take home vehicle policy. Maybe Wade wants to say something about that.
Mayor, I think I've got my microphone on. Yeah, it's basically the same graph policy that we had looked at in committee last month and then we also looked at it again in committee this month. We're simply asking for an approval from council so that we know we're operating within the, you know, guidelines the council approves of. Just to be blunt, in order to change some of our operations, I've gone ahead and sent some people home with vehicles in this situation. You know, are some of the guys that are actually reporting to job locations or doing their duties without even coming into the office. So we've got them set up to where keeping them a little bit more isolated, but this is basically just a simple request for an up and down vote, yes or no.
I just wanted to add, we executed responsibly and it's a very good policy that we just come this with and I believe we should, we should move forward with it. With that being said, I make a motion we approve this request.
Bill Boswell. Okay. We've got a motion and a second. You need to do roll call again, Jeff?
Yes, please. Chris Head?
Chris Head, yes.
Mary Jean Krieger? Mitch Magnus?
Mitch Magnus, yes.
And the DeWolff?
And the DeWolff, yes.
Bill Boswell?
Bill Boswell, yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Heath Kirkpatrick, yes.
Bill Williams?
Bill Williams, yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Wayne Cohn, yes.
Mayor, you have a motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Then you, Chris, Bill Boswell?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Bill. You folks see on the agenda, we have old business and we have a whole lot of items there that we're going to table until we get together again. If in the future we see that they become a little more urgent, we'll bring them out up over, over this remote broadcast. So we're going to table all of that. We're going to go right down to my comments and we might spend a little bit of time here. I want to bring you up to date on a few things that has happened this last week. First of all, I think it was Monday, Tuesday, Kay Waters with the Humane Society and two other people came into the office and they wanted to share with me that they are virtually broke and I guess they live almost week to week, like a lot of people do, and their income comes from their thrift shop, which has been shut down because of the crisis. So I encouraged her to look at ways of getting revenue, you know, wait until the stimulus comes out and hopefully there's something in there they can draw from. But it just so happened that day that Caitlin Sinnett was in the office and she, she did a feature on them and the need for money. So I think you'll see next week, probably Tuesday or Wednesday, I think you'll see something on KY3 about the Humane Society and their need. I'm hoping that they can get an immediate relief maybe from, from donations through KY3 and they're going to try to get the word out there every way they can before asking for money from the city of Harrison. Any comments on Humane Society guys? It's unfortunate, but they're kind of headed in a downhill trend. Jeff, you got the fence up. You know, this had a little bit of chatter on social media, so I wanted to show everybody a picture. If you haven't seen the fence yet, this is really a cool thing. I want to thank Wade for helping put this together. If you recall, we had an old chain link fence there. I think it's been there forever. And what happens when the cars would plow into that, that chain link would grab all the poles and it would be a domino effect and it would pull out a lot and it was damaged and kind of laying over and a lot of trash would roll down. So it was really a mess. So we came up with a way that, that we think was very affordable and we will also, Keith Lee is building this and he's going to put the chain link back up behind the fence. So when a big boulder would come down the hill, the chain link would catch it. So that's really a good thing. I think this is going to be a really a nice piece. I wish we weren't in this crisis and boy, we could show off our main street a little more, but that's the fence that's going up. Next is something I am pretty excited about, folks, and I'd like you to get excited too. It is, I think you all can, hey, there we go. And that's not, some of you probably know who that race car driver was, but this is something entirely different. We're going to launch a campaign tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock. The billboards will light up, other signs around town will light up. We will be handing out stickers at, right now at Hudson and maybe another place in town for the community to know. We'll also have these labeled stickers available here at the water department. And people, when you wear a sticker, you can wear it for many days. You don't have to take it off and throw it away at night. So that's something we'd like to keep going at least for a couple of weeks because I think we all know that is the answer. We can continue to go out and shop and go places and especially with our local businesses. They really need the support right now. We have a lot of small local businesses that are still open and you go in there and shop. You just stay six feet away. So that's going to come out tomorrow and I hope you guys would help promote it, you know, maybe shoot it out over Facebook to your friends and, and so on. So looking forward to that. I will share with you, we had another report from Dr. Jackson this afternoon. Two more negatives came to his office. So he has a total of 22 tested and 22 negatives. We also released the information that the one person that was tested positive, the Arkansas Health Department has made contact with all of that person's contacts. So we have to believe that person didn't have a whole lot of contacts before he was quarantined. So with that said, that's really good news. I think a lot of people on social media have been aping about, you know, about the person, but I think as long as we know that person's contacts have been contacted and I'm assuming they've been quarantined, that we all feel a little bit better and we have to, maybe we can quit asking questions about that. So I'm going to turn it open for questions from you folks, maybe about the crisis.
Jerry, I know we're just got the one positive and I see other communities shutting down and I've had a couple of people ask me, do you think that we'll shut down? Is that something that you foresee happening or is that we're just going to play by ear and see how many positive cases we get?
That's a good question, Linda, because we have had that out there also on Facebook, if America can do this and America can do that. And I think Grant can assure you right now, it's all up to the governor. And we're watching the governor daily and you know, just from the, watching the governor, you have to assume he's not interested in shutting much more down. Pretty much what we have out there now, for the most part, it's essentials. But I think as long as our numbers don't rise a whole lot more, I think he'll continue, but who knows what will happen. I think we all have to believe that we're going to get some numbers that are going to go up here in Boone County and we got to be prepared for that. I just had one question that came in and it says, how can you purchase at a register and stay six feet away? Well, I think we all know we can do that. You know, when you wear one of these stickers, it's going to tell the people to stay away from you. You walk up to the register, you can lay down the money, lay down the product and stand back and then the register, the employee can come up and check you out. Folks are going to find out. It's really easy to do. You know, you're going to, you're going to move around backwards, left to right. People are going to see you doing that. They're going to do it. I think the people are getting the message now. Finally, Harrison has gotten the message. Anything else from the council?
I guess I would like to reinforce again at Park said it's Chuck, but I don't know if you want to use some crime scene tape or whatever, but to, I also saw the playground pretty full and I get it, people want to have, especially the children, but for our own safety and our community's safety, I think blocking that playgrounds off is unfortunately, you know, it's beautiful weather out, it's perfect, but just to help us help ourselves. I'd like to reinforce that again, that that gets done. And I think that was evident on your program the other night too, so many of the community felt the same way, playground shut down.
Yeah, absolutely. I know Luke reminded me about this. I call it self distancing. It's just easier to say. And around here at City Hall, we implemented that Monday and it, and it got kind of fun and now you see it. You walk around City Hall, you won't be able to get close to anybody. I mean, there's only a handful of us here, but when we're together, and we are together almost daily, Luke and I and Jeff, David, you know, and Christine, there's five of us that are together. And we can actually be in my office and be six feet apart and we, I don't think five of us are ever in my office, but we're always aware of that six feet. It's fun to, fun to do that. So we got another question. It says, Mayor, as Mayor, can you put out a curfew? I'm going to let Grant answer that.
Yeah, so I think the distinction probably between what the governor can do and what a mayor can do relates to public versus private. So not exactly to be, to be straightforward, I'm not sure if a curfew can be put out by a mayor versus the governor. To me, that probably is something more along the lines of what a governor would do in this situation because mayor has broad authority on the public spaces. So you've got the public buildings, you've got the parks, but there are of course some private businesses out there that the governor controls as far as what they've done so far with shutting down in-person dining, bars, those sorts of things. So I think that's probably going to be more along the lines of what a governor would do and not what a mayor would do.
I'm with you on that. Anything else, folks? Okay. I think with that being said, we'll be, we'll be here every day. You know, if you have any questions going forward, you know, I heard something the other day, a person told me, have faith, not fear. I think that fits. So what do you think Pastor Heath? Pastor Heath?
Yeah, I agree with that. You know, in practice, we do, we do have a tendency to pull together. So that's kind of the blessing of this thing is us all getting closer and you know, that's, that's the, that's the beauty of going through something like this. And boy, you sure, it sure makes you appreciate your freedom, you know?
Yeah. Why don't you close us out with another prayer, Heath?
Oh, I would be glad to. Lord, and we just thank you for your grace over the city of Harrison. And God, we do ask for your protection over not only our city and state, but our nation. And God, again, we look to you. We look up to you to, for wisdom and to guide us and to give us protection. And Lord, we're so grateful of our families and it's this kind of quarantine that we do provide what, what freedom we do have. And God, we thank you for that because we know it comes ultimately from you because our rights are God given and because we're created in your image. And God, we just thank you for your grace over our nation, for it continue to protect us and may we be strengthened because of this. And we thank you for your grace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Wayne Cohn, motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you all. Be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything's been great.
Thank you.